Okay, let's call our ordinance committee meeting to order and if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a audience of citizens. If anyone is here that needs to address us, that's not part of the agenda. Now would be the time. I don't see anyone here, so we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens and we'll move on to our approver of approval of our June 3rd meeting minutes. This page, there it is. There it is. Thank you. Second on that? Thank you. Any comments or questions or anything on this? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Alright, so we are on to our tax abatement policy, alright?
Alright, so good evening, everyone. So this update potential consideration to the town's fixed tax assessment policy came at the request of a developer in town, particularly with 414 Berlin Turnpike. And so, you may recall, there was an abatement that was approved, a 10-year abatement that was approved based on the town's fixed assessment policy, which I believe was amended for that policy. And so, that agreement was signed in 2024 and it went into effect. And so, the developer at the time did not realize that the abatement was only on the improvements to the buildings, not the land itself. So Berlin's tax assessment policy does not incentivize any improvements to the land. So this property was originally farmland. It was originally purchased in 2014 for $445,000, or 2011, excuse me. And so, the developer is requesting to use the 2020 grand list as a baseline for the property's assessment, for the tax incentive, instead of the 2025 grand list number, which if you go back to 2020, this was before the land was approved for the buildings that are now there and being built with more on the way. And it was really just farmland back when it was purchased. So quite a bit of work has been done to the property since then, and the value of the property has gone up and the potential of the, and as you know, the land is worth much more now, that the developer's gone through planning and zoning and gotten the necessary approvals to build quite the facility on that property. And so, the developer came to the town and said that the pro forma that they put in to make these apartments work doesn't work if they're being taxed as highly as they are on the land. And so Attorney D'Onofrio and myself and our tax assessor met with this developer and their attorney about a month ago, and they put forward a proposal, which is in your packet, and that is for your consideration. Now, I want to double check, but Jeff, we would need to amend the tax policy for Berlin.
Correct.
And so, right now, and
We never included land, though, right?
We've never included land, and it's also a new thing, right?
Is it a new, it's something new that changed with?
The statute changed a couple of years ago, but the thought process behind the agreement was that the abatement kicks in after verification of the total cost of improvements. And so, everything is tied to the investment in the improvements rather than the allocable appreciation of the land value due to the change in use. That's the way the policy is written, that's the way the tax agreement's written. But as Ryan indicated, the taxpayer apparently didn't understand when he signed the agreement that that's what it meant. That's what we were told.
Hmm, okay.
So it's important because it wouldn't just be potentially changing this one agreement. We would have to open up Berlin's fixed assessment policy, and that would open up the door for other, others to get that as well. And so, it is
Going, going back.
They could request it, yeah. And, you know, if they were paying attention, they would, yeah.
When you refer to improvements for the building, does that include like paving and sewer connections and all of that? Those, those are part of the building estimate?
Paving is part of it, right? But Sorry, Joe, do you mind, you gotta go up to the mic just to?
There's certain infrastructure that's part of development that's already in the value of the buildings themselves. Or the incentive of the, the abatement or the discount. I add any yard improvements, which would be paving, lights, et cetera, then plus the building.
So you're including the actual hard development, not?
Correct. The land value's changed because of the rights to build and then what he's putting on the property, that's why the value changed.
Everybody's land in Berlin has gone up in the last five years. All of it, I mean.
That is true.
And when I set values, I look at a per unit basis as well, and I look at other facilities that we have in the community, so I'm on the same equity that I have to deal with besides value.
What I'm getting at, if the developer spent $300,000 on a parking lot, he's still gonna get the tax discount in a parking lot.
Right.
And that was my understanding when we approved it.
And we did have a revaluation, to your point, in 2022, right, Joe?
I think it'd be foolish to open his can of worms.
Yeah, so Chris is here as well, our economic development director, who did bring this proposal to the Economic Development Commission, so.
Oh, yeah, what did they have to say?
Sure, Economic Development Commission did not take action. Couple different things were said. One was a double dip, didn't we already do this? They did not take any action at that point. Part of it was, is a couple of the members that were more knowledgeable, for instance, Vince Fortunato, Chris Capola, were not there. One knows buildings, one knows finance, so they didn't take action on it. I would say, looking quickly, and that night I did take a look, probably eight to 10 other possible tax abatements from 2020 to today could potentially fit under this, is what the estimate was. If it was something that was done, my only thought was, and my wonderful attorney can tell me if this makes sense or not, which is to do what we did with the tax abatement, which is unless you spend $25 million, you cannot get this, which would mean his project only. That's the only thing I would say is, in order not to open it up to the other ones, because I think that's a really bad policy to do that, because, I mean, for instance, Palms expanded, I think, 12 times in 30 years. Not that they're gonna come back in every one, but it is a challenging, a challenging thing. And the reason the 10 and 10 was put together in the first place was truthfully, we knew Mr. Diario. He was a known entity. The part right now that scares me personally is not being at 10%, 830-g is not really written in our favor, town's favor, and the unknown scares me. Again, I don't know whether he's telling the truth or not, but I would hate someone to come in and say, hi, I'm putting 800 units on here, tell me I can't. And right now, I think as, excuse me, Counselor Panessa had said, recently, things are passed, which is gonna make it more challenging to defend it. So again, I just, I'm throwing out a bunch of different things, but the reason we did it in the first place was, is we wanted him to be successful. I don't know whether or not, again, if he's coming to double dip, but from economic development, they were not fond of it. My perspective is, if it's done, limit it. If you decide against it, I'm fully behind you, but just want to give you my thoughts on kind of where, where the idea came from the 10 and 10, because there are some folks that I know of, who actually, one group has come to the town both for 889 and for our senior housing, and their intention is tax credits and developer fees. It has very little to do with the community it's in. In fact, I don't think they really care about the communities they're in. So, just my, my two cents.
When you're looking at a project of this magnitude, $30 million, $40 million, when you crunch the numbers on what I have for value now on the land, you're looking at about $49,000 in tax. You got it?
Yeah.
First building, like four, you know?
So if you look on this, just to make sense of it, so you see 2025 is the 2025 grand list, you see the assessed value at 2.3 million, and then the, excuse me, the appraised value of 2.3, and then the assessed value of 1.6. That's the current, that's what Joe has as the current value. And then we use this year's mill rate, the current mill rate of 30.65, where the developer would be paying $50,000, 150,000 approximately on that land. Now, I put in bold the 2020 grand list, so you could see that the October 1, 2020 value was assessed at $173,400. So the land has gone up quite a bit in value, and really, it's an additional $45,000 a year in taxes to the owner. So that's, that's what we're talking about here, is approximately $45,000 a year.
So you said it was farmland before, so it had farm status?
It had minimal value, and then we did a reassessment program, that also changed value as well. He also, when I met with him prior to our meeting, when he crunched his numbers, he's, because he only has one building done, so when you take that land value and you crunch it on 40 units, your base price is up there. Versus dividing now 200, $2 million into the 200 units that's gonna go there. So price per unit comes down because of the spread over to 200 units. So that was a, that's what triggered all this. He says, well, I applied for this 50%, but I'm really getting like one-third, because when he crunched the numbers, using the 40 apartments, that's done.
Is he talking about, I mean, I, from, I remember going through this with the developer, you know, he made it clear, I mean, our tax abatement policy, I think, is pretty, is pretty aggressive. You know, it's pretty good, I think. That's why we've had the development we've had in Berlin. I mean, we've, you know, done a good job with it, so to give more, I'm not sure, but, you know, I remember some of the early conversations with, with the developer was, you know, he needed it for his financing and, you know, was giving him a break, which is, which is great, which is what we wanted to do, but he has his financing now. So I, I don't know what, you know, I mean, he was talking, as I recall, discussions, it was in public, you know, that, you know, development would fail if he didn't get the tax abatement. But he got the tax abatement and he got his financing, so, you know, other than I get this would save him some funds, everybody wants to save some money, but I don't, I don't know why we would be, I think we're very generous with our tax abatements, from what I could tell, you know, and have been, which is why we've done well, but there's a point that we are, you know, giving away taxpayer money, and to me, it's a bit, it would be a bit much. It's, doesn't appear to be that big of a chunk that would affect his bottom line either, but I don't know what his bottom line is, but I don't know. What, what do you guys think about this?
We do it for one.
Yes, that's the other scary part.
I'm not inclined to change it.
Yes. What do you think?
I mean, I'm not either. I kind of look at it as you knew you were buying farmland and you were going to develop it, therefore the value changes and so would the taxes. They don't think this is his first development, but
A lot of his activity
Land is worth more. Isn't that the whole point?
That's the point.
And you're welcome?
His activity increased the property value beyond that. He, he convinced the town that some of it wasn't floodplain. He did, you know, a lot of legwork and he enriched the value. Good for him, he's a good businessman. But all the developers have done that.
Right.
And they get, like Peter says, you give it to one, you gotta give it to all of them.
I agree.
Well, that's the other, that's the other problem.
You know, I know there was the suggestion, make it at a certain dollar amount, so it only applies to him, but I don't think that's fair either, so.
Yeah, it's problematic.
Because someone doesn't have the means to do this, why should they not share this thing?
And, but to your point, as, as Chris said, EDC had the similar concerns as well and, and did not seem to be in favor of this either, so.
Yeah.
What I saw from the meeting.
And, but, and the land part of it is new, right? Is that something that, could we always have done it on the land, or was that, that's something?
You always could have done it.
We always could have done the land? Do most towns do the land? What, what, what do they do? I'm just curious.
No, because the theory is that you want to encourage people to invest in improving a piece of property, and in order for you to establish the thresholds at which you get different incentives and different periods of time for those incentives, you have to be able to verify the cost of improvements. So everything is keyed to verifying the cost of improvements. And the land value is somewhat of an intangible because it increases based on the approvals and the change in use rather than specific costs. You know, if you look at the, when I was originally contacted about this and told that he didn't understand, I mean, it's in the agreement like five times.
So that was gonna be my question, is there any question that the agreement was not clear?
It's, it's in the agreement, it's the definition of total cost of improvements, includes paving, by the way. But it's, it's very clear that you've got to submit documentation to the assessor to substantiate that you've spent this money, and once you've verified it, then it kicks in. The one valid point that Bob DiCrescenzo, who represents them, made was that, hey, there's no threshold in the agreement. In other words, it doesn't say that we're, we're comparing to a baseline assessment. But the baseline assessment is whatever it is before the cost of the work is verified, because the improvements is verified. So, you know, I, I mean, ordinarily, you don't see municipalities abating on the land because the land is kind of a throw-in. You know, it's, it's, it's getting, you're, you're capturing the majority of the value increase through the verification of the cost of the improvements. I don't usually see the land. I mean, you can do it, you know, as a sweetener. It usually isn't something that attracts a developer, you know, a developer isn't gonna say, hey, I'm spending $40 million on this project, and you're gonna, you're gonna verify that 40 million, and I'm gonna be eligible for 10-year abatement on a sliding scale, and in order for me to come to your town, I need you to throw in an abatement on that $2 million value increase in the land. I mean, I never, I've never had that come up. Even when we did Amazon, you know, the value of the vacant land when, that was vacant for, gosh, 15 years in North Haven, you know, the value of the land skyrocketed, and we did a tax abatement agreement and a building permit and a sales, we did all kinds of abatements for Amazon, and they never raised the fact that the value of the land went up significantly because of their project. It's the first time I've had somebody raise it. Like I said, statutorily, you can do it, you'd have to amend your policy, because right now, the policy doesn't allow it. And if you wanted to set a threshold and say, hey, if you propose a project over 25 million, then we'll throw in an abatement on the land, you could do that. We did, I wrote a building permit discount ordinance in North Haven that gives you a 50% discount on the town portion of the building permit fee for projects over $100 million.
$100 million?
We've had two. Tronic, you want a discount on your building permit fee? Go spend 100 million, we'll give you a discount. Of course, we didn't do the, we have a fire inspection fee that's very significant, and we didn't touch that. They were all represented by council, they didn't ask for it, and then they got the $800,000 fire inspection bill.
What?
Wow.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, that's some fee.
Yep, we all knew on our side of the table that we weren't giving it to them. They didn't figure it out.
Wow, that's a
Not a turning down attaboy.
Okay, well.
So we were like, he's like, should we mention it to them? I said, why?
Why?
All these big shot, big law, New York law firms, you gotta read.
They're not as smart as they think they are, I guess, huh?
Don't ask for it, you don't get it.
Wow, interesting.
I think if it was clear at the time and in the agreement that it didn't include the land, then they don't have a basis to ask for it now, just because he says he didn't understand.
Yeah, that's
I mean, it's specifically, if you look quickly at the agreement.
Represented by council.
The first page, it says, tax incentives offered under the program only apply to improvements to real properties, specifically to new construction or renovations, expansions, additions to existing buildings. Okay?
Yeah, it's pretty clear.
Then it goes on to say, once you get through the, the whereas is, if you look at paragraph one, it talks about constructing the building improvements and a renovation for a total cost of improvements. Okay? And then paragraph two, tax abatement agreement is expressly contingent upon the verification of the total cost of improvements. And then total cost of improvements is defined in paragraph three as the cost to create new space for private business activities, including construction and alteration of buildings, all site work, et cetera. And then in terms of the baseline, the adjustment of assessed value, paragraph four, is to commence and be effective on the October 1 grand list following the verification of the total cost of improvements. Again, paragraph five, when the qualifying real property improvements for each phase have reached substantial completion. Paragraph six, upon verification of total cost of improvements totaling at least $25 million. So you know, I, to me, it's not, it's not unclear. Maybe, I guess, we didn't say, hey, this doesn't apply to the increase in your land value. I don't, you know?
I did read those sections to the developer as well. I thought it was clear, you know, when they, when we did sign it. I mean, I understand the, the need to, or the desire to change the pro forma now, but at the time, this was signed and agreed to.
You want to have him come in? I mean, do you want, do you have questions for him? You want to have him come in and tell you what his problem is?
I mean, he doesn't want to pay taxes is his problem.
What's that?
He doesn't want to pay the taxes is his problem, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I don't, listen, we want him here, the project's looking tremendous. We visited it not that long ago, he's doing great, which is all
Why I said, do you want to give him five minutes?
I mean, we, we could, I mean, we could.
I'm going to, later on in the meeting
Yeah.
Town council meeting, we have another item for the ordinance review committee, so we will
We're gonna have another meeting anyway?
Another meeting anyway, so
Yeah, I mean
Good, if, if you wanted to, I mean, that's
Try him to come to that meeting.
Yeah, we could.
opposed to that?
Yeah, let's, that's fair.
Welcome to address
Of course, yeah, 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 no, I think that's fair. I mean, listen, we, you know, he's doing a great job over there. Yeah, he's, it's looking nice.
Saying, I want him to feel that we're not taking his request.
No, no, I agree.
Respecting what he's doing.
Well, that's why we're talking about it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, he's been fair to us, I mean, you know, he's been good, and he's, he's doing great over there. Yeah, so let's, it makes sense, we'll have a, yeah, sure, sure. Yeah.
If, if you entertain
Yeah.
Looking at a baseline
Yeah.
The baseline needs to be figured out and not just given.
Oh, sure, of course, yeah.
It could be a nightmare.
Yeah, I agree.
Just when you, if you decide you want to open up that Pandora box, keep that in the back of your mind.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, appreciate that, Joe. Yeah, alright, so, yeah, let's just, we'll, you know, when we schedule the next ordinance committee for the other, yeah, I think that's, that's fair, fair to him, see what he has to say. Does that make, so we're all good? We good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want your next ordinance committee to meet on December 16th?
Let's maybe wait for January, yeah, that's, that's
Today for my birthday, no.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah.
Gives us time.
A lot, right?
I think the fire services committee is like
Meeting? Oh, okay. No, I, I, let's wait till January.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's that shouldn't, I wouldn't think that would, yeah, okay, that's where you mentioned that too.
And actually, economic development is working on a, another proposal to amend the fixed assessment policy, so we should have that then.
Oh, okay, oh, alright, okay. Oh, good, yeah, I mean, I, you know, there's not a great rush, I mean, we want to
Dave, would it be in January?
I think it's the
What's the first?
Is it the sixth? Okay.
So, yeah, no, I think that's good, that'll be great, and, you know, we definitely welcome him to come talk to us again, you know, he's doing great, so we're glad he's here, and, you know, it's all good, it's just, it, to me, would be just open up the box for everyone else too, that's the, that's the part, that's, would be probably quite a, a little bit of a mess for us, I think, but anyway, but let's, let's
For me, it's like he's gotten the benefit of what he bargained for too.
Yes, well, I agree, well, I mean, it's clear in the agreement, yeah, of course, and yeah.
Way you, anyway, there was a lot of back and forth on this agreement.
Agreed, yeah, I remember all that, yeah. Yeah.
We talked about this, there's been back and forth multiple times. So if there was any confusion or uncertainty or ambiguity, it's not like this was like take it or leave it, sign it or don't. It wasn't like that at all, this
And he's got, what has he got left now? He's got two, two, how many more buildings?
I guess three.
Three? He's two or up, three more? Is it five total? Yeah. Yeah. Three more.
Building that is CO'd is called building five.
That's five?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, the one we, yeah, let's get the hotel. Oh, and that other little piece there? Yeah.
Condom in the front part.
Oh, okay, right. Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the units, we, we met him over there and went in there, it was, they're really nice, he did a nice job. Oh, yeah?
Yeah. I did an inspection
Oh, okay.
I go in, you can hear nothing, and then you open up the patio, the patio door
Yeah.
You can hear all the sound, so
Oh, so, right, well, now that you say that, I didn't hear, yeah, you didn't hear any, you're talking about like traffic noise. Yeah, you know, now that you say that, it was quiet in the building.
How was that?
I was gonna say, you know what that reminds me of?
Oh, no.
Opening up the balcony door, not being able to hear any sound, Ace Ventura Pet Detective, you know what I'm talking about?
I was thinking the same.
I was like, wow, is that what you guys do on your site visits?
Yeah, he did a nice job on them, they're nice looking units, I'll tell you.
Just wanted to add one
Yes, sure.
So we met the operator at the November Economic Development Commission meeting. It is something that they've been talking about for a while. It is Choice Hotel, which is under the Radisson brand.
Oh, right, yeah, okay.
Mid to higher tier, so we'll get more details, but it was really just an introduction.
Yeah.
So it looks like, again, they gotta come back to P&amp;Z, indoor pool and a small amount of conference space.
Yeah.
So to me, it seems like
That's great.
The best of all worlds, which is a good thing, because I think
How big's the pool?
I do not know.
Can we talk him into a bigger one? Maybe Olympic size indoor pool? No.
Hey, you know, on that tough subject, that, that health club closed on the Berlin Turnpike.
Oh, LA Fitness?
That has a pool.
They're gone.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, another gym is going in there?
Too bad, that's close to the line, close enough.
Yeah, interesting. LA Fitness?
I see, I'm close.
Interesting.
Moving on.
Yes, I think if we're all good, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, alright, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, alright, so moved, see you guys soon. Very sick. Yeah. 20 minutes, we'll see.